Oval Office Directors, please.
Barnes.
Here.
Baumann.
Here.
Keywes.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Kaiser.
Here.
Maple.
Yes, ma'am.
Thiel.
Yes.
Tomczak.
Here.
Zebro.
Yes.
All present.
And your pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Cory and a second by Mike. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, approval of the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting, June 19, 2018.
Motion approved.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion by Cory, a second by Mike. Discussion?
What did we change?
It was highlighted in your packet.
Okay.
The approval of the agenda.
Okay, I guess what I'm really looking for is just a breakdown of adding some words, is that what you did?
Correct.
Okay.
We had the first thing, the motion by Thiel, correct?
Yes, yes, that was in there.
So it's just the second paragraph?
That there was discussion before the second.
Okay, all right. You know, I know there's a couple of things that were missed, but I'm not gonna go, because I believe there was a part where there was a motion to have board members sign and date to pick up their packets, which that motion should have never been made.
Right.
Because the person who had voted no was the one that made the motion. So, um, I'm not gonna put that in, I'll leave it as is, I'm just... Any other discussion?
Why do you think the person who had voted no shouldn't have made that motion?
Because if you recall that night at the meeting, I told you that the vote was over for that agenda item. I did discuss this with Wasby, and he also said if the person voted no, they cannot come back and make a motion in regards to the same item on the table.
Did you ask him about making two motions at once then?
Yes, but the one thing he did tell me, and he corrected me on, is you vote for the newest motion on the floor.
But you can't have two motions on the floor at once then?
Yes, you have multiple motions on the floor. As long as they are germane and stay within the same subject matter. Further discussion? Wasby. Our counsel, Wisconsin associate, the meeting will go to every year in Milwaukee.
I answer considering that I know about the Irish rules.
Would you like to vote? Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
What is the motion we're reporting on?
No.
To approve.
To approve the minutes.
To approve the minutes.
Baumann was no?
Correct.
Keywes?
Yes.
Gorman?
No.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
No.
Thiel?
No.
Tomczak?
Yes.
Zebro?
No.
I make the motion no.
Four yes, four no.
Yes, you may. Motion fails.
I'd like to make a motion and we approve the original meeting minutes that were presented on the original date of, as presented on June 19, 2018.
July 19.
July 17.
Oh yeah, presented July 17, fourth of June 19th date.
Okay. So we have a motion by Kevin, is there a second?
I would make a motion that would review video evidence of the meeting, of the minutes in question.
Uh, we would need a second to his motion first and then...
That's how you did it last time.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Madam President, follow your own procedure or don't, but be consistent.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Kevin and a second by Jess. Further discussion?
Can they call for a second for the first motion, a second motion?
Jess?
How about my motion?
I will, we're gonna do this correctly when I talk to Wasby, and we will, if you choose to, we will change. And you could add your motion at that.
I did add my motion, ma'am. I've ordered a motion to the floor that said I make a motion and we review video evidence for the meeting minutes in question. Choose, call for a second or don't.
Is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Cory and a second by Mark. Did you catch that, Amy?
I did.
Okay. Discussion?
I guess my question to Cory is, you want who to watch the video?
All of us.
For what purpose?
To prove my point, this is the correct minutes, that the minutes that are outlined, what I asked to be added to the minutes actually happened. Apparently, no one's concerned about that.
I guess I am a little willeder by the fact there's a lot that isn't in this minutes that went on.
You should be.
Because I guess you can't... We could all go back and ask for...
And that's the point of my motion. Go ahead, go back. Every member on this board has a responsibility to review those minutes prior to attending the meeting. Every person on this board should check the minutes and make sure that matches their recollection of how the minutes, how the meeting went along. This is why we do video recording, because the meetings are very busy, a lot goes on. Currently, it's very inconsistent. And it helps our secretary to make sure that we have accurate minutes. Accurate minutes are a legal document for this governing body. So, it needs to be accurate. If you think something's missing, Kevin, then it's your responsibility to speak up. Diane said, well, there's something missing early. What? She didn't bring it up. She doesn't wanna see it defended, she doesn't wanna see it brought up. That's her choice. Anybody else, is there something in the minutes that was not, not put in the minutes? It's their responsibility to bring it forward. And our staff can only do what our staff can do. That's why it gets sent out for review.
And I agree to a certain aspect of your comments, because in speaking with Wasby and even Dean about our minutes, and keeping as clerk for two years, you can put in your minutes as much or as little as you want, as long as you are representing what the action is that you took that evening.
That's an incorrect statement.
If you would like more detailed information, then yes, you can put, and maybe that's something we can add to a future agenda item, but only putting in certain items, I don't see adding what you did change what we ended up...
It simply documents the hand that you are allowing more than one motion at a time. Do you say that perfectly legal? Great, then you shouldn't have a problem with it. But apparently you do.
I don't.
Then why did you vote against it?
Because I think you're stating things, then we should go back where you made an incorrect statement in a motion.
That's your right to...
Or possibly calling board members certain names in...
If you think that that actually happened, you have a responsibility to do that.
That's fine, we're gonna move on.
Motion on the floor, and we're still discussing. I made that motion because I feel the minutes previously provided are impartial and more representative to what happened. I reviewed the information, I reviewed the recording, and I came up with that conclusion. In previous discussion, it was going to be identified that administration was going to amend these minutes. And I quite honestly feel that was more due to the results of the actions taken by Cory before the meeting. So that's why...
You talking about what actions? I couldn't hear you.
The actions that you took for...
You use a verb, you use another word. What are those actions you're referring to, Mr. Thiel?
Can you be more specific?
No, but you're the one that knows what you're talking about. I'm trying to get clarification. I am using English.
Is there any other discussion? Otherwise, we need to vote for the newest motion on...
We don't need to vote for anything until the discussion has ended.
If we are not moving forward with the discussion and just debating back and forth, that there is no, nobody else is discussing but yourself, I'm gonna ask for us to vote on the second motion. Amy, will you please read it?
On the what motion?
On the newest motion on the floor, which was your motion.
Again, inconsistency. You said the last thing, that we want to point it forward, but have to vote for the first motion first.
And I corrected myself, if you do not remember.
No.
And I said, Wasby said you will vote for the newest motion on the floor. Would you let that roll back on the video?
That's what you said at this, that's what you said at this meeting. Okay, but that's not what you said at last meeting. I'm just commenting on your inconsistency.
That's fine. Amy, will you please read back the second motion?
I started the motion, aye.
Well, it'd be Cory's newest motion. We do need to follow, that is what Wasby...
Oh, you're looking for a second on that, I got it.
Yeah. No, no, you got your second, and he got his second, so...
So Cory's motion was to review the video evidence of the meeting minutes in question.
Okay, so that is the motion that we are voting on. Right now, we do need to vote for the newest motion on the floor. If that fails, then we go back to the original motion.
Okay, all right.
Okay?
And the reason we're doing that is just because of this paragraph here?
Yeah. Yes, correct.
Which is supported by video evidence, by the way.
Okay, so we have a... All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails. We will now go back to the...
Can you tell me who voted what though?
Yes, it was Mike.
Mike didn't vote, he didn't move his lips.
I heard him.
No, he didn't.
He didn't vote.
He voted. Cory, are you...
I watched him. I was looking to... Did you vote? Which way did you vote? Clarify for me.
Mr. Roll call vote.
Please.
Barnes? This was to review the minutes. Review the video.
They voted no.
Baumann?
No.
Keywes?
Yes.
Gorman?
No.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
No.
Thiel?
No.
Tomczak?
Yes.
Zebro?
No.
Three yes.
Okay, could you read back? That motion will fail. And could you please read back Kevin's motion?
Kevin's was to approve the original meeting minutes presented on July 17th for the June 19th meeting.
Okay. I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote.
Barnes?
How about asking for a discussion on that?
Discussion?
Thank you, Madam President, because you're probably wondering what we do. So, when you look at this vote and you listen to what Mr. Thiel had presented, you are in essence ignoring factual information of what really took place. The whole premise for recording meetings is to make sure that we're accurate. Vote to support this, meeting minutes are out the window. There's gonna be whatever somebody wants to put on. I don't even know why we pay Amy to be here in that case. Why are we there to look at stuff? I don't know what you're so afraid of, factual information.
Cory, I'm not afraid of anything, I just find this kind of a little redundant. We could all go back and ask Amy to add continually.
You can't ask her to add anything, but it's factual.
I know, and I understand what you're saying. Of course, it would be factual, because there's the video of it. I don't think anybody is disputing the fact that this is it. My problem with this is that we are spending so much time on this right now, when I thought the first minutes were correct.
And I thought that they were.
Right.
That's fine.
Mm-hmm.
I get to state my points, just like you.
Yes, I do too. Yep, so that's where I'm coming from at this point.
At the end of the day, it just doesn't change the outcome. We're trying to make decisions and progress forward.
It makes sure that everybody knows, you can do two motions on the floor at one time. But you have to vote for the first motion first, is what we were led to believe. This is a change in all the procedure of all the years that I've been on at school, and then now it's changed again, so...
So, my understanding of that issue is Diane acknowledged she was incorrect in the first meeting. She spoke to the Wasby attorneys. They acknowledge she can have multiple motions on the floor at the same time. However, what she learned and corrected herself is that the most recent or last motion made in that conversation has to go first, and you go backwards in voting at that point.
Correct.
Correct?
And I think I stated that.
I'm not spitting that back at all.
Okay.
Okay, is there a...
I'm asking for clarification, it actually happened on that night, that's all.
Diane, can I ask, let's say if the first... What motion have we voted on first when it passed? Are we still gonna vote on the second?
Nope, nope. If that motion passes, then the first one is basically no. Further discussion? Roll call. This is, okay, please, yeah, this is Kevin's motion.
This is...
To basically...
To approve the original meeting minutes presented on July 17th for the June 19th meeting.
Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Keywes?
No.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Thiel?
Yes.
Tomczak?
No.
Zebro?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no.
Motion carries. Item six, public forum. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about and/or address issues included on the school board meeting agenda. General operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the board president's once the number of people wishing to speak is identified on the night of the meeting. Prior to addressing the board, please clearly state your name and address, and share with the board what agenda item you are speaking on the board to use at noon. That last, and share what, I did not have it on my last agenda.
That actually came with Matt Ellis a long time ago.
Okay, okay.
You're supposed to speak to what is on the agenda, and we had several people that came forward and didn't speak to something that was on the agenda.
Got it, got it.
So, Matt and I typed up the exact policy, and then we had yellow sheets. I think you still have some yellow sheets here. If somebody wants to speak that just hasn't, it's just a reminder that it's supposed to be about what's on the agenda.
Gotcha, okay.
We need to have it all done.
Is there anybody that would like to speak on what's supposed to be tonight's agenda? I'll ask again, anybody out there? We will move on. Item seven, presentation in 2018-19 proposed school district budget.
We'll just go through the packet page by page, and we'll start at page one, of course.
Brett, can I ask questions as we go, or should we stay into the...
You can ask the questions anytime. So anyway, on the first page, basically, every year I show you this, the process of the budget takes course over the course of the entire school year. The one thing that really changed this year is, in the past, our school district and every school district around the state, absent some larger ones, they typically kept track of all the accounting district-wide for staff. Now, the federal government has decided that rather than keeping track of your staffing by district, you're gonna put it by building. So now, this year, we ended up adding, I don't know, thousand counts, something like that. So this year's budget was really difficult. So every teacher is now by building. The students are building, the aides are by building, so this budget was definitely an interesting one to do, and will also have other things to tweak in the coming times. But the federal government decided that they wanted people to be able to compare schools, and one of the comments that I made to the group guide people is when you're in a school district like Milwaukee, you might wanna see between different pockets of the city, are you giving equal funding to this school? But when you're in a place like Mozenee or Pittsville, where there's one elementary, there's one middle, and one high school, you know, there really isn't a big need. But there's a big need to do it, because the federal government said you will, and if you don't, then business manager gets some hot water, and has grant issues and so forth. So that was the biggest change this year for us ever in budgeting, and this is my 29th budget I've done. So, like I say, it was the most interesting one by far. On page two, I just always take you through some of the items that I consider interesting. You know, you start out with special education program across all the districts. A hundred fifty-five thousand is basically about five kids. Then you go down a little bit, and you look at the difference between what it costs to educate with a rural virtual school, that's seventy-five thousand for about twenty kids. And it all comes down to the economies of running a virtual school are much better than dealing with a high-needs special ed student. But I said, it's always interesting how divergent costs are. In this year, we had a new actuarial study, and that deposit in the Fund 73 is a total funding of the annual required contribution for that. We're putting aside money for the, in Fund 73, to fund our early retirement programs that are available for staff. The 4K program this year, we had this Friday, it would have been, we found out that St. Paul's isn't gonna offer 4K this year. They have, and actually Diane found out a day or two earlier, maybe. So, but we found out they weren't gonna do it. They have a new principal and a new priest, and they may revisit it, because their numbers are really low at the school. I mean, they really don't have a lot of kids. I think, on my census thing, I think she told me there was like thirty-eight kids, including our Ford Davis last year. And that's in K4, I believe, like the 4K to 4. So yeah, they are really small in the room. The next one, the next thing I wanted to mention to you is the computer budget. This year is the year of the Chromebook. We're gonna be looking at buying Chromebooks around Christmas time, when they're flipping model years like we did last time. So we're gonna spend about two hundred thousand on thirteen other Chromebooks, and those are for the six, twelve kids. We're gonna scab together some of the old ones and use them for checkout, and move them around for other kids, depending on condition. But yeah, we'll be looking at doing another Chromebook adoption. So basically, we can give the kids in 2019, '20 new Chromebooks. The materials adoption is the same as it's been in previous years. Each year, Julie has different instructional areas that receive new revenues to improve their instructional program, whether it be books or materials or what have you. But Julie gives off the money to the appropriate areas.
Gotcha. Question regards to that, what have we used here to date with the existing? So it's the same, it's ninety, what it was last year.
Yep.
Do we use, almost ninety?
Mm-hmm.
Brett, and the special education busing cost, can you give me an... I guess I don't understand.
We have special buses for special ed kids. We have routes that are not regular, and kids don't ride on it. And so then you get handicap aid on it, which, like when we just, when you look at it, you get like twenty-five percent aid. But I can't be transporting regular ed kids on those vehicles. So the kids that are going to nap up in fire over tall kids there, or taking kids from Milton, out by the vent, all over the area.
So how many kids? I mean, the top of a hundred fifty-five thousand is for roughly five kids, the three hundred thirty thousand in transport represents how many students?
If I was gonna give a winged guess, what, would say a hundred and a half? Or it can't be that many.
No.
It can't be that many, because we've got three vans, don't we have three minivans? Or is it four minivans?
I'd say forty.
Forty, all right. It's expensive.
And wouldn't you say that that, well, that because of some of the aides, is the aides' salary included in that figure, or is that separate from this?
No, that's just straight up what we pay lammers. Yeah, we had a pretty good pop this year. I was teasing Diane, my cost went up. Well, you can see it on the budget. Well, you can see it in the budget if you looked at the transportation lines, but it went up like forty-five thousand. But we've got more kids with more needs, you know, we got kids that the bus service is going out, getting them individually. Some can't go all day to school. There's so many different scenarios that lammers deals with in regard to the special needs population. Some are in wheelchair, some just can't function on a big bus, you know. And it's all determined, Diane and lammers don't get to decide who gets to ride in a special ed vehicle. That's the EAP, or not EAP team. EIP team.
IEP.
Employee Assistance Program doesn't do it. You know, the EIP team, excuse me, got the letters transposed, but yeah. So that Mary's group of special ed staff determines who rides on a special ed vehicle and such. Yeah, it's very expensive, but you're providing more of a one-on-one type transportation or small pupils. I mean, on an eighty-four passenger bus, that's much more economical than having to run a small minibus or a minivan. Of course, you know, there's a sizable difference in cost. Moving down, open enrollment. We got, have more kids coming in and more kids leaving, according to what they're seeing right now. That open enrollment's one of the ones that, this last year, I was really frustrated, and my aunt, if you got to listen to me grumble, you know. You don't realize if you don't work at the school and keep track of enrollment, how much people move. But this last year, I had over a hundred thousand dollars in movement through open enrollment during the year. So if like kids are moving at different times of the year, they'll prorate and, well, Mozenee had it fifty days. If I didn't count it on my pupil count, then fifty days goes to Mozenee, thirty goes to Pittsville. You know, so you had all this money shuffled around, and what, it's amazing the amount of people that move, and the difficulty it is knowing, like when you see today, a hundred and seventy-one kids leaving is what we know now, a hundred and sixty coming. You know, that number could change drastically, because so many people move around. It's just amazing. I said, you know, this last year, I just about flipped, because you see these people moving, and then when they gave me the bill, I was like, oh, that's not good. And how do you know what you, how do you know how many people are removed during the year? So, it's definitely interesting. The staffing changes, we basically can see the reductions we made. Like I said to you guys in the past, there's, and I'll show it to you again, there's a, we've had some decline in enrollment. So, then there's that declining enrollment exemption, and we gotta continue to look at our costs, because yes, you decline in enrollment, they take money away from you. Last year was a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So, you know, it's something to be aware of. And it's good when we can do it on an attrition basis, you know, where people are retiring, and left to go to another school district, or those type circumstances versus doing a layoff, because then you don't have unemployment exposure, because we're assessed, anytime you lay somebody off as a school, it's a direct rule, I don't pay a premium. If I don't lay anybody off, or have any type of situation that would result in employee losing work, you know, that's good for us, and these don't create unemployment exposure. So, that's what I wanted to show on that. And on page three...
Hey, can you page two here, real quick?
All right, sure.
Just yearly reading and math workbook purchases. Is that twenty a typical number?
Yeah, I always put that in there based on what they need. If sometimes they don't need materials, you know, they might not spend it, or we may use it for other instructional...
Did we use the twenty K for that?
I didn't believe last year they did. If they do, I don't remember.
No.
I don't think so.
Unless it was something purchased prior to him coming out, and you know, after when he maybe he had purchased before he left before July 1.
And the thing about, I would say to you, Kevin, is I said, it doesn't bother me if we don't spend money, you know. The thing, and I had one of my old board members, he said, well, how do you know you haven't, don't spend all the money that you're allocated in a budget? I said, because consistently, I've not, never done that. So, I mean, so if we don't need something, I'm never gonna go out and try to spend it. Like I have friends that are in school districts, they're more with chastised than if they didn't spend every dime of their dollar. They think it's good to spend every dollar.
Just if there's no need, and why purchase, right?
Touche, okay, exactly.
But if you really truly have an effort to try to get more resources closer to the classroom, I would challenge, quite honestly, whether we should really be investing in some materials, and workbooks, and textbooks as well. Just a thought here.
Well, let's put it this way, each year, you have that money at the disposal, so if Julie, if the principals and the staff feel it's necessary, Kevin, let me assure you, we will. We've had years where they say they have a big need, where, I mean, I can remember when we had Linda Erickson, or actually, I think it was Linda Erickson came in, said, you haven't updated something, and that blah, or I don't remember how many years it was, but we ended up spending a couple hundred thousand on materials. So, I don't sit there, just like with the Chromebooks, you know, Brady said, are you sure you wanna just buy them, you know, on a three-year cycle? And I said, yeah, because I said, I think it's the most effective, and when there's a need, if there's a big problem, we're gonna sit there and deal with it. I'm not gonna sit there and say, well, we can't figure out a way to do it.
Thank you, Brett.
Yeah, so, anyway, on page three, summer construction. Really not a lot going on this summer. Yes, you guys are aware, they're repainting the Cressky floor. Every year, we repaint the floors. Steve Kit and I did this list together. We knew we were painting the Cressky gym, let's get a new paint job. Every year, we do the boiler maintenance, chiller maintenance. Every year, with the flat roof, you have some miscellaneous roof repairs. Every year, we seed and fertilize the fields. Every year, we, thanks to salt, we end up with concrete going out, heating, thawing. The asphalt cracked and such. Steve put in the mount, he thinks for the whole amount. Realistically, we're not gonna spend that much, because we're gonna, if we have construction, a lot of work going on in a lot, like at the elementary school, we're not gonna seal that lot. If there's areas at the middle school, that there's construction activity going on, which next summer there will be with the next Center of Energy Efficiency Project. We'll kind of play with that number, depending on how the projects go for next year. So some of that, I don't think will really happen. But we will try to seal some lots, because we're new. Like this year, we would've sealed normally the high school lot, but if you see how it looks with the science addition, that'd be goofy to try to do that. A new item that I had talked to you about is the tennis courts. Basically, they're... do that. A new item that I hadn't talked to you about is the tennis courts. Basically, they're, the paint's going away. We're also having a deterioration of the asphalt. It's literally kind of blistering. If you go out there, you'd see what I'm talking about. What we're looking at doing is re, or fixing those of the tennis courts. In fact, it was funny today, I had a vendor out visiting with them about how the best approach to take care of it. They helped loss of schools with theirs. And a lady came up, do you mind if we play tennis? And he said, fine, you can come play tennis. But, and she decided to come back. But I said, the courts definitely need some maintenance. The beauty of this is it really has no budget impact on you. It does have some tax impact. It'll go on, would go on the fundating tax levy. But when you look at thirty thousand dollars, you're talking, you know, three, two point eight cents on your tax levy. So I don't think you'll have anybody that'll say, oh, golly gee, why'd you spend so much on the tennis courts? The beauty of it is, I wanna add pickleball. It was something that I, it was funny today, I was yakking what I was doing. And Julie goes, I go by Marathon Park. They got pickleball people playing all the time. It's very popular with seniors. And I thought it was ironic. She was singing exactly what I'd seen on the news. They've had things where in churches, they play pickleball in winter in the basement. And so I think it's something that, you know, you're gonna get some kudos. The lady that went in to play tennis today was a retired lady. And I guessed her, well, what would you think if I put pickleball lines on this too? Oh, I'd like that. So like I said, I think you have, I think you have good anecdotal evidence. And Marathon County now, anything they do, if they have any kind of sports they have, they put pickleball. And I said, what's cool about pickleball is they said, the guy who's telling me to build big pickleball courts, just a whole complex in Rockford. So it's evidently the rate. So anyway, probably enough about pickleball. The carpet in the Boulevard School, we're looking at replacing some of it. It's got stains. It's upstairs, it's ripped up. This entryway is pretty much salted up. So we were looking at doing some new carpet. This has been in here since I've been here. I don't, so it's been here a long time. And so needless to say, could use some updating. The next one we had down there is the fitness center. As you're aware, we're doing asbestos debatement on the floor. We, Steve's also got some air testing in there. Excuse me. So then, as part of that, we paint the fitness center and then replace the floor with a rubber floor is basically what we'd be looking at doing. They're also getting some new equipment in there. They're getting a rig and some new rubber weights, which they call, I can't think what the name of them is. But we're getting new weights and some new equipment in there. And that's coming out of Kevin. The fire teachers put that in and that'll be coming out of materials adoption. So that's one of the things, when you say what is, what happens with the materials adoption money, they want to, new equipment in there. And they'll have a rig type thing where it'll be multi bars and different weightlifting stations.
So let me get this written. We have allocated money from our textbook material adoption to.